Mr. Baraka?
Here.
Mr. Whitaker?
Here.
Lisa Chantier?
Here.
Commissioner Godiosa?
Here.
Michael Myers?
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Here.
Commissioner Neri?
Here.
And myself, George Niels, President.
Thank you. There's a moment of silence on the agenda tonight. It's for Andre E. Wilson. She was one of our advocate track authors here at her rec center. She developed a very strong relationship with her staff here. They had a very cordial relationship, almost an love to each other. She recently passed away on February 29th. She was a resident of Upper Chichester. She was born in, she was a graduate of Chester High School when she was 74 years old. So the township would just like to recognize her passing with a moment of silence.
Can I have the approval of the minutes from the February 6, 2020 Quarter Commissioners' Caucus Meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Just for the record, we have an individual who was tape recording the meeting on videotape pursuant to the township policies. Would you please identify yourself, who you're taking the meeting for, where it's approved, and, I'm sorry, where it's being posted, and the fact that it's being recorded, everything that's being said.
Chuck Bold, it's for Transparent Government for Upper Chichester on Facebook and YouTube.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
I appreciate it. And have the approval of the February 13, 2020 Quarter Commissioners' Meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We met last week in executive session to discuss personnel matters. We do not meet tonight. So with that said, I'd like to open up to citizen comments. Anybody from the right side of the room would like to come up and speak? Anybody at all? Anybody from the left side of the room would like to come up and speak? Alright, but the record shows there are no citizen comments, and we'll move on to our question looking forward. Smart for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you have a question, my report is available at township building for anyone related to review it. I do have several items for action this evening. The first is to consider a resolution taking action on the preliminary final subdivision and land development application submitted by W.P. Boothwind LLC for 3703 and 3709 Chichester Avenue. This is known as, for anyone who doesn't know that address, this is known as the AutoZone, preliminary final land development subdivision plan that was presented last week.
So if there's a motion in the second, I'd say move. The applicant is present tonight. You may want to ask if they have any additional items that they wish to present to the board.
Do you need to do that before making a motion?
Probably best.
Okay.
So if there's any comments from our applicant, please go up.
Thank you.
For the record, please state your name.
Sure. My name is Denise Serrana. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The township was kind enough to forward a draft of the resolution for this evening, so we were able to take a look at that. And while the vast majority of what's in there is acceptable, or more additions are acceptable, there are two that you wanted to bring to your attention and ask for a simple discussion. One is the condition related to one of the waivers that we requested. As you know, the site is along Mill and Chichester, and the project is creating two existing long hour lots and creating a new lot line. It's going to be two lots, one in the front, one in the back. And so the AutoZone project is on the front lot. And as part of this plan, as you've seen, we have proposed complying with all of the township's requirements, which regard to widening the road, adding curving, adding sidewalk, adding ADA ramps, as we saw at the last meeting. And I remarked that we have actually two additional ramps on the other side of the road. And all of that work along the frontage of this front parcel is about $140,000 of improvements. In addition, we're also complying with the requirements for doing the streetscape and adding additional landscaping, and that's probably approximately another $50,000. We had talked before that we are very hopeful that there will be a second tenant for the back lot, and at that time, we would obviously put in the additional curving and sidewalk along the rest of Mill Road. And we had hoped that the township would be agreeable to allowing that to go forward in that way. The waiver that we requested was to not have to do that additional work on the back lot, since we weren't developing the back lot at this time, but that obviously we would do that work when we come back, hopefully in the future with that second lot. The way the condition is written, if I am reading it correctly, and I want to make sure we're not reading it correctly, is that the township is asking to escrow the cost of those improvements. That's part of this plan. And that's a significant amount of money, and unfortunately, this project just isn't able to accommodate that additional cost at this time. So we ask that caveat to that waiver be removed with, obviously, the understanding, as soon as we come back with Plan Two, we will obviously do that work. So that's the first request. The second request that I wanted to ask you about is whether you would consider doing this as preliminary final as opposed to just preliminary. And the reason that came up is that we had been moving forward with just preliminary originally, and we were asked at the planning commission, at one of the planning commission meetings, that we, they were not prepared to make a recommendation on the preliminary when we were there, but it was brought up at that meeting. If we were agreeable to extending, that we could then request preliminary final, so that we wouldn't lose any more time. And that was agreeable to us. And so when we submit the plan, we submit them as preliminary final plans, and I noticed that the request for that waiver was set forth in the resolution as to be denied. So again, we will ask if the board would consider granting preliminary final, because at this point, the plans have been a plan, there's something else that we need to do with them, and we'd be hopeful to be done, be able to move forward with this project.
So Denise, one of our exceptions is Section 505-88, where it talks about extraordinary hardship. So what I would like to recommend to the fellow commissioners tonight is, if we can approve it as preliminary and get some type of cost estimate of how much the additional curves and sidewalks would cost to be installed, and if you can just give us a little bit more documentation and reasoning why this is an extraordinary hardship, if you can work with me on that, we can go preliminary. If you can provide us some numbers as to why it is a hardship, and then we can move forward.
I'm going to give you the number now, but I'd be happy to also provide something more in writing in more detail about that. It's about $40,000 for that additional work for the rest of Mill Road, and the project just can't sustain that.
Do you know the total cost of your estimated construction for the project?
I don't.
Do you know what, a rough estimate of what percentage of that $40,000 would be?
I mean, it's their goal to have a second tenant. Obviously, that's extremely important to make the project be successful. And so they're working very hard to find a second tenant, which would allow them to do additional work.
The key question is when, though.
As soon as they can. They're working as hard as they can, but right now, there would be no reason to even add additional sidewalk unless there is another use there. But as soon as...
It's going to help drainage and stuff like that, in my opinion, I mean.
And they are creating the basin in the back, which will handle that, and it's being oversized to handle more than just this project at the request of the township. But I do understand your request, and I think that's something that we can put together further for you, and hopefully have that conversation.
And by the way, I just want to make one correction to a statement. The plans are not clean at this point, so there is still work that needs to be completed on the plans. There are engineering items that have not yet been completed. From a subdivision and land development standpoint, with the exception of the waivers, it is to a point where we could give a preliminary slash final. However, I guess the question, because if that was mentioned at a planning commission meeting, you'll have to excuse me, I read the planning commission minutes, because we get those from the stenographer each month. I don't recall seeing it. It may have happened, I don't know. But why is it, when you submitted the revised plan, was the application not changed that it would have said preliminary final? And we would have gone through that same, the process at that point?
Right, so I know that you were not at those meetings, but your associate, Alex Swetzer, and he was obviously aware of that. And I know that the planning commission was also aware that we raised it and we agreed, and we submitted the plans that were marked preliminary slash final. And if we're just talking about checking a box, I think that, I don't even know if that's true or not true, that we didn't check a box, but the plans were marked preliminary final, and we were told to submit them as preliminary final, and that's what we did. And I know that our engineer, Ben Oll, has been working very, very closely with your office for months now, and addressing every single issue that Alex has raised. And that we feel that the plans are being very retched, where everything has been asked, and maybe there are some little t's that need to be crossed. And I thought of nothing as changing the plan in any way that if we came back. The preliminary final, while we would very much appreciate being done, and maybe based upon what's happening in the world right now, who knows what it will be happening next month? And we would like the opportunity to be able to know that this project can go forward. And that, that just came up right now. That wasn't something we talked about a lot, so we're glad. But obviously, more important for the project to go forward is addressing this other waiver situation.
Our site costs around, could you identify? Oh, my name is Carl White. I'm the owner of Bright Barbers in AC Brooklyn. Our site costs around, based on the spreadsheet I looked at on my phone, so it's more or less, $800,000. It's about another 5%. The cost is out of control. It's not profitable, of course, phase one. Moving that traffic signal is very expensive. Streetscape is going to improvements. Mill Road, correction, Mill Road drainage issues that we didn't create, they were just the roads, we'll correct it. Liding along Chichester, so it's really expensive. And I don't know where $40,000 will come from without a second tenant.
But having you develop that second lot, it is my security blanket that that second tenant might be coming. I mean, my fear, I'm being honest with you, is we're going to go to the first one and walk away.
Well, I'm losing money on the first one, so I'm a little inspired, really inspired, actually, to get that second one, or helping actually.
And I think we're worried that they may not, with that additional requirement, they may not make doing the first one make any sense. So that's what we're struggling with right now.
And Carl, you're intending to be the retainer, the owner of one to end to, right?
That's true.
So it's not like you're doing this and disappearing your stake.
Yeah, I'm certainly the owner, I'm certainly paying taxes a lot too. So I'm pretty motivated.
As a side note, we are dealing with a subdivision land development plan currently that was passed 10 years ago, that the plan did not come to fruition, and the residents have lived with undeveloped lots and drainage issues and items because the developer owned all those lots, stopped taking care of them, walked away from them. And fortunately for the township, there is an escrow to be able to cover those public improvements, and we're going through motions to be able to cover those public improvements. Now, not apples-to-apples comparison, but I do think that it's very commonplace and something that's a security for us, that when we have those escrows in place, that it ensures that work's going to get done for the taxpayers.
And I think what's important, in section for the, where you do have, is where most of the bulk of the drainage issues are. They have that mast on it, six inches off the curb line?
Totally agree.
And that all that can be escrowed and get done if this project goes forward.
And I agree that, it would just be that, if in the future, if that one is not escrowed, and you end up walking away from the property because of whatever happens, then if the township needed to come in and put in those improvements for any reason, the taxpayers would then pay for those improvements. Whereas at this time, the for-profit business, who's running the business, who bought a property to improve for the intent of renting it out, leasing it as a long-term income, I mean, would be paying for that. So we, you know, I'm not a member of the board. They make the decisions, however, they have a way to options of who could likely be paying for this down the line.
Right, we understand that, but I think what we're trying to express is that we may not be able to do the lot one at all, and that would mean nothing, that's grown, and nothing's improved. So we're trying to find the right balance so that the project can move forward, and he can continue to try to find a tenant for the second parcel and do that work. And hopefully, through the work that's done in the first parcel, that does help some of the drainage issues that you're talking about, and it sounds like that's a big part of where the existing problem is coming from.
Denise, was there, was there a?
In 30 days, from last week to this week, probably, I guess it happened. I'll put it on record, I'm going to hide it here. I'm okay with the preliminary final. This was a shock to me. Robe itself, because as apples and oranges, these lots have been undeveloped forever, empty. There used to be a house there, caught fire, and all of them. The road, the service road, or the road that goes back to the Deer Carlson, was that part of the agreement that something's? Is that being stabilized or are we out the Mill Road yet? Or is just, is just on the plan, is my understanding, for that, when they develop the second half?
The only thing that's happening is the same thing that we did with IBW, how many years ago? 15-plus years ago. There is a right-of-way that will be offered for future dedication, or a future offer for dedication, should there be the potential of creating a roadway. It would actually help any of these long lots, because it would actually create a third lot that would be up fronting a roadway, a service road. As a matter of fact, when this plan came in with, I guess, the subdivision, it actually showed three lots on it. However, since that road doesn't exist, and they don't own the property, the property that's adjoining this is actually the fire companies, there was no frontage on that third lot. So the only thing that's happening right now is that area is being reserved. It was reserved as part of the change of zoning when Mr. Manassini came in with the two property owners and asked for a change of zoning. That was one of the conditions of the change of zoning.
I mean, I, like I said, it's from last week to this week, I mean, I think it's had nothing to hide it. I mean, the state made it, end up putting the two other ramps on there, so they don't have to pay for it. What you're doing, the streetscape, fixing the light, you're improving the lot. The lot went back, I mean, this is my opinion. You're oversized it, maybe it's not a question of, I'm an engineer, but I can't bring up for stormwater management. You're piping it also. You've still got an empty hole, a lot in the back, there's no curb, no sidewalk there. Now, there's no curb sidewalk going up to Chichester, I haven't been from the road at all on that side, so. Give them a chance, they could get the second half out. I mean, don't get me wrong, I mean, I'll pass the preliminary. I mean, I'm just trying to navigate what appears to be the burden of that, but I'd rather see the fuck to do more.
We'd like to move forward to one tenant. When we have to make a limitation, we can do. Requiring them, we're probably setting a structure drawing board, always a second tenant if this project ever happens. But I think what's really a second tenant is that those are post-built. I think that's to get the project on down. Instead of, this is being exercised in the marketing, we're leasing. Wow, where's that second tenant? How do I get them? I'm not going to be exercising, let's get this thing built, so now I can really sell, just point to a project. So, you know, this is happening, we'd love to be a part of this.
Is the county, the county that you submitted, or the county, you submitted that as preliminary, you also have plans?
Well, originally, it wasn't a preliminary.
Do they have any, is there any concerns about the loading dock from the county? The loading dock areas?
Yes.
Concern about the loading dock?
We need to look at your net bid application.
But you, is that something, I think that's something that you raised separately. Not right? I mean, and the county is recommending?
I mean, we made a change per recommendation from Alex that added a gap in there.
Delaware County Planning Commission was concerned with the loading dock. The fact that you had pedestrians, the loading dock is immediately adjacent to where the pedestrians would be crossing.
Right.
Right, we changed that.
And you did change that?
Well, we added this grass strip that just separated the parking from the loading area. That was a recommendation of Alex, which was a good one.
So we could, so?
Another question on the floor?
One guy had questions when we put the motion on the floor, about the way it's written. So I'll just move to accept it as is for the moment.
Second, second, I think, I have two more questions.
So here's my question. And at the bottom, it says the following are approved, and it lists the one about the widening. I don't, we're not reading that correctly.
That is conditionally approved, so if they agree to those conditions, it would be approved.
Okay.
I actually just wanted to clarify that in my state.
Okay.
And the other one?
So right now, our work, I think the resolution is written as preliminary, correct?
The resolution currently is both, to tell you the truth. So what I did, and I probably should read some of these off, and I don't want to delay the point. We have the comments in the township in the year beginning of February 24th. The comments of the zoning officer, which at this point are satisfied. Comments of the planning commission at their meeting of February 27th, in particular, show temporary pedestrian access on the plan. Applicant will degrade the site to eliminate the retaining wall, pedestrian, and rail, sidewalk with decorative border, six-foot concrete and two-foot brick. Add a stabilized access path to the plan for access during construction. As a permit, access to the basin in the back of the property. Add two decorative trash cans at the entrance door of the facility. Place an internal sign of no servicing of vehicles in parking lot. Comments of the Delaware County Planning Commission. DEP submission and approval for the Act 537 of Sanitary Store. The Pendi Highway occupancy permit. The approval of Southern Delaware County Authority for sanitary connection. Compliance to the Delaware County Conservation District review. PADEP NPDS submission and approval. Fee and low of open space. Preparation of developers agreement, stormwater agreement, municipal improvement, security agreement. Shall be resolved if following waiver requests are conditionally approved. Section 505-16B7 requiring all existing utilities, culprits, bridges, railroads within 200 feet of the property be shown on the plan. We're asking, as a condition, that the utilities within the limits of the property and adjacent road rates of way be shown. All we're looking for is anything that's on Mill Road or Chichester Avenue adjacent to that property. Section 505-32A1 requires sidewalk and curb to be installed along all property of budding any street. Escrow of the widening of Mill Road to 17 feet. Curb and sidewalk along the length of the property be submitted to the township. Shall be resolved if following waiver requests is conditionally denied. Now, I will tell you that if this is a preliminary only, the fee and low and the preparation of the documents and the agreements would not be in this resolution. So that it's a combination at this point, because I wasn't sure how the board was going to react. If you are going to do just preliminary, then the condition of Section 505-13B that requires a mandatory separate submission of preliminary land development and final. So it would be a preliminary submission and a final submission. That's the resolution.
And just a, just as a point, I think what the applicant is indicating is that the, and not that I've indicated, but I think what's being said intuitively is that any approvals for the second lot, which would have to come before the board under a subdivision and land development, it required would be to do those other things that are currently missing from that property. But I think what the applicant has indicated is that it's still going to be under one contiguous ownership. They're not changing ownership at all, and that that is certainly going to be part of their process to make this a viable, viable lot, as Commissioner Rakowski pointed out. It's undeveloped right now, there's drainage problems right now. And if Lot One does not go forward with it, then you're still going to have those problems, and you're not going to have any of them addressed. At least, I think what Commissioner Rakowski was saying was that at least we'll get a portion of it squared away, if I'm characterizing what you're saying.
Correct. And just one more comment on it, not on his part, is we're fortunate enough to give a piece of property that's going to make a full lot, and something in the public debt. Commercialized, jobs, look what's going on in the world today. We may not have this opportunity down the road, and I'm hoping Jones tried to find a level one for the next one. And it's going to be tough, no matter what we do, throughout the whole community, towards what's going on in the world today. It's scary, but at the same time, we've got an opportunity. Just appears exactly what I wanted to try to say.
Mr. Pierce, one question. If fee and low money can't be used for nothing but recreation?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, so. I know in the beginning, what I said. I think I'm going to backtrack a little bit. I think what Commissioner Rakowski's saying is you are coming in, you are developing the land. You know, but I'd ask my fellow commissioners to recommend this, or approve it. But it's going to be up to them.
With the waivers of the non-escrow, of the secondary lot, for lack of a better word, the secondary lot escrows and making it a fallout. Those will be the only two changes. As a paraphrasing, correct?
Correct.
Will you be accepting it as written, correct, what you said?
No. No. So the second sentence of Section Two, it shall be resolved if following waiver request is conditionally approved. You would strike an escrow for the widening of Mill Road to 17 feet?
Right, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, that would be gone.
Well, I think the one thing I would want...
Right, that's what I don't want. Look, I want to be real clear about what I'm voting on here. If I accept it as written, now, I'm going to count, this has to be like written out. You know, if we're not voting on it as written here, we're going to eliminate number two.
We will be eliminating number two of the second paragraph of the resolution.
So we will be requiring the escrow?
No, we won't.
You will not be requiring the escrow.
Number two is the requirement of the escrow.
The waiver would still be there, but not the requirement to have.
But I would want the right-of-way in there, in case something ever happens. Do you understand what I'm saying about that, about the right-of-way?
The additionary would be the, that's fine. And then the other change would be in the, where it says now there?
Preliminary slash final.
Yeah.
You see, Bold, it says preliminary. You seem bold, it says preliminary. Approved as preliminary, it needs preliminary slash final.
Well, on the part here, I'm trying to echo what Commissioner Murray was saying. I'm agree with us, the curb and sidewalk. But is there an agreement with setting widen at all, 17 feet of the mill road from day one?
Yes, by my understanding, yes.
So would be widening only up to in front of Autozone? And then continue wanting to get out of there?
And with the request for the right-of-way now?
For that?
For that additional, whatever that amount of feet to be, or do you want to be...
I don't think we have, I think Murray provided. He's talked about the right of way in a year. That, that's what he was actually...
Were you asking which right of way were you...
Well, the, the right of way that's undeveloped, right, isn't particularly...
Yeah, he would definitely...
Sign essentially, that's on...
So I think the only thing we're changing is the waiver.
That's preliminary.
Yes.
So the last, it shall be resolved, is conditionally denied, that, that would be stricken as well. That will be, that will be stricken.
Well, let's go to Mr. Pierce then, sorry.
The last, the last.
So the three waivers the board would be approving are section 505-16B7 requiring all existing utilities, culverts, bridges, railroads within 200 feet of the property shall be shown and utilities within the limits of the property and adjacent road rights of the way should be shown. You'd be waving, section 505-32A1 requires sidewalk and curb to be installed along all property abutting any street. I would, I would be hesitant for you to accept that in that language because you, my understanding is you would like the curbing and sidewalk to be installed along Trichester Avenue and along the front parcel.
You could say along the back parcel.
So along, pardon, or parcel indicator, it's parcel number two, I believe we have indicated as. I believe that language should be changed.
Okay, we, we've granted waivers before about the other ground utilities.
And then the final grant waiver you'd be granting is section 505-13B requiring mandatory separate submission for preliminary land development and final. So those are the three waivers you'd be granting.
I accept, as making the motion, I accept that amendment. The Brooklyn Avenue requires sidewalk and curb to be installed along all property abutting, uh, along lot two.
That gets corrected way of writing it.
Second?
We're going to write everything out, going to make sure that it's correct. Don't sign it if it's not... We're going to... All right, so anybody else need comments?
Why, why do you want the final tonight as opposed to preliminary?
It's a tiny issue. We actually are about to receive the approval. So we're just a little behind schedule. And we're hoping to be able to break around and move forward with the response.
It's also kind of exciting, you think? And also, we don't know that meetings like the council meeting, but...
I mean, if you guys do otherwise, please. So if there's a motion on the board, we can go to our debate, don't agree with the preliminary final or make the vote cancel. So, so yes votes in favor, no votes not in favor, can you figure what, Paul?
Commissioner Barakow?
No.
Commissioner Woodaker?
No.
Commissioner Godiosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
No.
So, was that on the preliminary final?
Yes, the, the motion failed.
So with the board, we do that, we do the motion without the preliminary? What's the difference, or how both the members?
I will defer to my legal counsel, but I can use this moment to make a change.
Yeah, it would just be, it would just be another motion to approve it as a preliminary.
I, I feel better with preliminary. Let me make the motion. I'll make that motion.
Excellent, is motion, is there a second? Can you second it, please?
I'll say it for a question, so my question is, what gets it from preliminary to final?
It keeps it alive.
Keeps it, yeah. It's still alive.
I mean, I'm not against the project, I just... There's, there's not enough votes to carry...
It has nothing to do with personal estimate. And what I'm saying is...
I'm trying to put you to preliminary approval.
Keeps moving to final too.
Right, I think it's...
Which is different than the final or preliminary. You're honoring that the final by order of the questions we've given in the boards, decided not to respond. I was just saying, which would take to get from preliminary to final. And they start the project at preliminary.
Hopefully we can come up with... Can you ask for a... Wait, now then. Go back to my first, my very first request. Prove to us that it's a hardship.
Well, could we, do you mind voting on the, on the preliminary with those changes? Let's see, with the board's desires?
That would be appropriate, there's a motion and a second.
Should we walk through the new resolution because some things will be changed, obviously. So number 12 would be stricken, paving road open space to...
Okay, one is stricken.
13 would be stricken. Preparation, developers agreement doesn't happen until final. And then you get back to your waivers approved and denied. So the first waiver that would be in here that's included as written, requiring all existing utilities, culverts, bridges and railroads within 200 feet of the property shall be shown on the plan. Utilities within the limits of the property and adjacent road rights of the way be shown. And the second waiver is, there's still requesting a waiver. Now, would you entertain this waiver on the preliminary? Because we're coming back for another approval. We don't accept escrows for public improvements until the final is approved, so...
I think at this point, I mean, I would personally would like at least to know the, the direction of the board.
I'll defer to legal counsel, but I believe because they have these waivers on the plan, that we would have to act on those waivers. Number one, so they can revise the plan perfectly for a final submission.
Correct.
So then you have the second thing. Section 505-32A that currently reads as written in the resolution, requires sidewalk and curb to be installed along all property abutting any street. An escrow for widening of Mill Road to 17 feet, and curb sidewalk along a western property be submitted to the township. Right, what is as written on the resolution?
But is that second sentence being ignored for purposes of this?
So the question would be, is the board comfortable with going back to what we said, which is, as Commissioner Murray stated earlier, section 505-32A require sidewalk and curb to be installed along parcel lot two, abutting any street.
And then a third waiver would be denied?
You're saying they have to put in, or is it escrow?
Yeah, so, so what was brought up while we were reading the last one was removing an escrow, an escrow for widening of Mill Road to 17 feet, curb and sidewalk.
Lot five.
So that would be, if you don't with the language as proposed in the first time, it would be removed. However, you have to input lot two into that first sentence so that it is the number you're going to use for that.
Get it?
Yeah. And then you would change the preliminary final to this one?
Correct. So yes, so yes votes in agreement, so votes are... Can you figure what forward, Mr. Pierce?
Commissioner Barakow?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Godiosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Just to keep it early, yes.
Commissioner Murray? Motion, yes?
Thank you, and we will be back to the preliminary final.
Yep.
Thank you. And pray I should take it as I'm...
Yeah, I know it's a little tedious, but thank you.
That is resolution 2020-13.
I'll make those changes and get that back over to the township.
I'd like the board to consider a resolution authorizing the township manager to submit an application for traffic signal approval to Pendote...
Hang on.
Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the direction of a traffic signal at Meeting House Road and Brooklyn Firehouse, this is in conjunction with the Wawa project.
So move. Second?
All favor? Aye. Any votes, ayes, ayes, ahs, 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 ahs.
That's resolution 2020-15.
Thank you. I'd like the board to consider a resolution authorizing the township manager to submit an application for traffic signal approval to Pend, to the Department of Transportation for the erection of the traffic signal at Meeting House Road and Trichester Avenue.
So move. Second?
All favor? Aye. Any votes, ayes, ahs, ahs, ahs.
That is resolution 2020-16.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to consider a resolution authorizing traffic planning and designing incorporated to submit an application for highway occupancy permit to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation on behalf of Upper Trichester Township. This is, this is the consultant for the Wawa Provo Pineville group who will submit the HOP on behalf of the township.
So move. Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Any votes, ayes, ahs, ahs, ahs.
That is resolution 2020-17.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to consider a motion authorized for payment to be made to a update in the amount of $628.80 for work completed on the Creekwood Avenue inlet project.
So move? Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Any votes, ayes, ahs, ahs, ahs.
Do you have to do a follow-up?
Any questions for our... Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe this was, this was, that was requested from Commissioner Rakowski. I'd like the board to consider a motion to authorize the township engineer to conduct a vehicle speed volume study for health matter to determine the traffic calming measures that may be warranted.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Any votes, ayes, ahs, ahs, ahs.
Otherwise, I can report general progress.
Any questions, Congress, or something over there?
You got escrow program?
Do that.
I got it, yes. I will have that, that program list prior to, to the next one's workshop, so we can talk about it at a workshop, we have an authorization to make that.
Is there any board that you don't have?
I have... I have every board that was given to us by the Highway Department. We have done the measurements, and I do have several of the other wish lists from the individual wish lists.
I usually go by the highway recommendations, and I have it all there. But I'll, I'll, I'll get on.
I have just one other question for our man, for our solicitors.